Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the school committee to order. It is Thursday, January 16th, 2025. This meeting is being audio recorded by Jamie Wixton and broadcast and recorded by WCTV. Would you please stand for the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
According to va.gov, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to-
Even Siri is pledging.
Siri's listening.
Judy hates that. She's like, "They're always on me."
The first order of business tonight is public participation. Is there anyone that wishes to address the committee? Seeing none, we'll move on to good news. Would anyone like to share some good news in the district? Joyce?
So I just want to say the, um, we went to DECA districts last week.
Everyone muted.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Wareham was very well represented at districts between the students and the staff who were with them, the judges, there were lots of Wareham alum judges as well as the superintendent. So yeah, it was good. I don't, I didn't hear how the kids did, but I hope that they did well.
I did. Thirty-five are moving on to the states.
Wow, thirty-five, that's a lot.
How's that compared to prior years?
About the same.
I don't know the answer to that. Maybe Mr. Palladino-
A little bit better than last year.
Good, that's awesome. So congratulations.
Anybody else? Jeff?
I'll second that.
All right, we will move on to minutes of the meetings. We have three sets of minutes, November 21st, December 5th, and December 19th. Any comments or questions on any of those meetings, minutes?
Motion to approve.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, five zero zero, the minutes are approved. Next up, Emma for our student representative report.
Thank you. I'll just start quickly with the scores for sports right now. Boys' basketball is currently five-four, girls' basketball is three-four, boys' indoor track is one-two, and girls' indoor track is one-one. You guys were just talking about DECA. I do have some notes on it. We had roughly fifty kids that just attended districts in Hyannis, and multiple of them received both mini and grand awards. Students had a great time, and many are looking forward to states, as you guys mentioned, they're moving on. I've heard all good things from people, so I was there myself, and it was a great time.
We saw you.
It was, I enjoyed it. It was my first time, so. Um, another thing is, this was actually brought up here by you guys, but when the poetry club was being approved, someone mentioned possibly collaborating with the school newspaper to get poems published in it. And the school newspaper, our Viking Times, is actually going to be collaborating with the poetry club to feature one poem that is voted on by the poetry club to be featured in the next edition of the newspaper. We're hoping to do this in the following edition as well, but this will be the first time we do it, so we're pretty excited. Another thing is that the Viking Coffee Club has been delivering hot drinks to staff in the mornings, and they're spreading smiles that way. I know teachers really enjoy it, so. And this Saturday, Wareham High School's music program is hosting the Tri-County Music Festival for the first time. There'll be five schools coming to Wareham to rehearse and perform songs alongside WHS. The Foreign Language Club is helping with setup and running the event, and festival will be open to the public starting at 1:30 on Saturday. So that should be a pretty big event and pretty fun. And that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeff, question?
So, I'll give you a choice. The winning poem, okay? You can either read it as part of your report, or you can have the student who wrote it come and read it with the chair's permission. What do you choose?
I mean, if they'd like to share it here, we'd be happy to invite them. And if they don't want to personally read it, I'd be glad to share it.
You have the chair's permission if the person wants to come.
Awesome, thank you guys.
All right, next up, we have some fieldship requests. Mr. Palladino?
Thanks for having us. You may recognize Ms. Giafrida. She's been here a few times with us. And she's an amazing science teacher, as I'm sure you're all aware. And in her very spare time, she does some work with Woods Hole. And through that collaboration, she was able to get us a scholarship to have students attend the marine biology lab. So I'm going to have her explain, because this is all her. Please go ahead.
Thank you. So, the Marine Biological Laboratory runs, it's called a high school discovery program. And it's modeled on the courses that they run in the summer for undergrads, graduate students, and post-docs. And it's a three-day experience where students arrive at eight in the morning on a Wednesday and stay until around five in the afternoon on a Friday. And it's three days of very hands-on laboratory experience. And this is the first year that the MBL has reached out because they've received funding for it to be free of cost for our students. It's a small cohort of kids. They ask that it be between ten and sixteen students. And they, the only other really real requirement they have is that they be juniors and seniors. They want the, you know, the older students to be able to attend. The course that we will be taking is called Visualizing the Bacterial Communities of the Oral Microbiome. So students will be taking cultures of the bacteria that live in their mouths and then develop, taking samples, developing cultures, and preparing them for some pretty intense microscopy work.
And how many students will we bring, do you think?
Right now, we have sixteen students who have expressed interest, so that's great. We're right at the maximum number. And I have three or four other names of students who could be alternates just in case one of the sixteen decides they can't go.
I have a separate question, but I guess the students will have to be prepared for, to be grossed out by what's actually growing, growing in their mouths.
I think, I think they'll be okay, yeah. I think they'll be all right.
Make sure you publish that on Valentine's Day.
Right, it's a month, it's a month past Valentine's Day, so that's good.
But, kudos. MBL is a wonderful organization. I have a friend who's mildly associated with it, who lives right there, within walking distance of it. But my question is, is this just available to Wareham kids?
No, it's, it's available, there are schools that come from other countries to do this. But it's just, it is somewhat cost prohibitive. It's been cost prohibitive in the past. It's not the kind of program where an individual high school student can just sign up to go to on their own. It has to be, they want a cohort from a school. And this is the first year that they've had funding to be able to pay for it.
And they offered it to Wareham High School?
They, they reached, yes, they-
Thanks to you, I suspect.
They reached out. It was nice of them to do that. So they have the funding for this year, and their hope is that this year will be successful enough that it will be something that rolls over into ensuing years.
Well, thank you and congratulations. It sounds awesome.
Thank you.
So if I'm telling, it's going to be no cost to the students?
Correct. If you, I think you received some information on it. And the information we were given, it's, it's the information from last year, so it still has, it, it looks like it costs money. They just haven't, they haven't taken that out. But it's free of charge to our kids.
That is amazing. Where do they spend the night? Sorry.
So-
Two nights?
It is two nights. So the MBL has dorms down, right down in Woods Hole, right on Il Pond. And there will be, there is going to be another high school group from a private school in Dallas who will be there at the same time that we are, but they'll be taking a different class. So only our students will be in our class. And they are dorms that are, there's twenty-four hour security, and the dorms are locked at night, so that you have to have a pass key to get in. Because there are some visiting scientists in the area who are staying there at the same time.
Joyce?
I just want to say, I know you've had a connection to Woods Hole for a long time. And so thank you for bringing this opportunity to our students.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm really excited because I wanted to do something for a long time. And it's just, it's always seemed like it should be right there, and it, and all of a sudden, it's all come together.
Yeah, that's really great, so thank you.
Thank you.
April?
So the sixteen kids that are interested, are these kids that are in some of the more like advanced science classes that we have? Or is it, what, did you guys put out like a student survey to ask like which kids just in general would be? And are there like, obviously, I know, Mr. Palladino, you guys have pretty strict for these types of things with like, you know, attendance and discipline and stuff like that requirements. So I'm assuming, I'm automatically assuming that that's already the case. But for the kids that are interested, is there like a course requirement that they're currently or going to be looking to take like as seniors that will get them eligible for this?
So we put out, so the only eligibility from the MBL standpoint is that they be juniors or seniors. And their, their assumption is that these are students who are interested in science. Whether they can definitively say they want to major in a science is not super critical, but students who have an interest in laboratory science. So we, and this is the first time we've done this, so we weren't really sure how it, you know, who would be super excited about studying their oral microbiomes. So we put out, we ran an announcement for a few days and said, anybody who was interested, please come see me. And the teachers who are teaching the upper, the juniors and senior science classes pushed it in their classes. And I just, I developed a list, and it, it has worked out that we've had sixteen interested kids.
Awesome.
I think it's a good cross-section, though. It's, it's not, you know, you'd think maybe it'd be all kids taking honors and advanced placement, but it's a pretty good cross-section.
Good, thank you.
And will they have a chance to meet with the kids from Dallas in the evenings or dinner or anything like that?
So they will be in the dining hall, yeah. They will be, they will be having their meals together. Everyone will be in the same place. The MBL doesn't do a whole lot of arranging of social time. They do give time in the evenings for the kids to have a chance to keep up with their schoolwork. I have a feeling that they will probably find each other because there's not a whole lot going on at Swope in March, so.
Well, I don't want to presume, well, I will presume, after we approve this, maybe we could have a student or two speak to us about their experience when it's done.
Sure, yeah, that would be great, yeah.
Great. So do we have a motion, motion to approve?
Seconded.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Thank you and-
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, thank you.
All right.
Mr. Palladino, now we have a senior class trip, I believe?
Yes, so I think we have some senior members here, including Emma. We also have Peyton Calvin and Ms. Teresconi, the advisor. And they're here to talk about the senior class trip. It may sound familiar. They're replicating a very successful senior class trip from last year, but I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Teresconi and our two senior reps.
I'm just going to give it right to our friends here.
The Class of 2025 respectfully requests the approval of the following senior class trip. Date, Monday, June 2nd, 2025. Place, New York City. Time, one day. Leave at 6:00 AM, return at 10/11 PM.
And I know they're excited to answer any questions you may have about the trip.
Joyce?
So I read that the class is paying for the bus. I know you had a really successful fundraiser. So that's, so clearly that's keeping the cost of the trip down, right? Okay, great.
But that's always the goal, is for us to keep the cost down, so it's open to everyone. And I hope we're in a position that we need two buses. That would be phenomenal. And we've had two buses on some senior trips in the past, all one-day trips, obviously.
Brendan?
Just, I remember reading about it, and since, you know, my son's not going to tell me anything, but he is a senior. Do you guys know what activities, I know it mentioned a couple of different things, but have you guys narrowed it down to what you're going to do yet?
I know, we're looking at a couple of ideas, but we don't have anything finalized yet. Do you want me to share any hints on here? So there'll be time to shop in Times Square, first of all. That'll be kind of a good chunk that students will enjoy. But for some structured things, we're currently looking at a Broadway show, which might not quite align with our times. But we're also looking at visiting Summit One Vanderbilt, touring NBC Studios, and visiting the Skyscape HQ, which is a spy museum. So we haven't finalized anything yet. We're still looking into what specifically, but there are a couple of options that are some good choices.
And in some years, they also have two options, so a group can do this, another group can do that. So you're really kind of meeting the needs of what the students want to accomplish when they're there.
Well, I, again, I asked my son of, you know, the different options, which one he'd want to do, and he was like, "I don't know." I'm like, I'd kill to like, yo, be able to go on a trip like this, although I won't go to New York during baseball season, but it sounds like a great trip. And so I, good luck to you guys.
Thank you.
Jeff?
Do I remember, remember correctly that it's ten students for one adult chaperone? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Sounds reasonable.
Have either of these two students been to New York City before?
Yes.
One yes, one no? Okay, all right, just curious. Thank you. It's good to broaden your horizons.
So I know you guys are looking at, the students chose to do their own bus, which, a bus with a bathroom when you're doing that long of a drive. I don't blame you in any way, shape, or form. But have you guys, are you guys like, obviously like pricing out cost effectiveness for the buses? And should you need a second bus if there is like a, like a volume discount? If you guys have more than one, I'm guessing that you have the kids very involved in that.
Yeah, so there's a, obviously a price break that you need to hit to really be able to rationalize a second bus. I'm hoping we need to. That would be phenomenal. The reality is, I think every trip, we've just used one. But definitely, you know, you can't, you know, if the bus seats fifty and you get sixty kids to sign up, that's a tough sell, because then it dips into their fundraising, and then it costs more per student. So that, these people are all very good with business and personal finance, and they, they know what they're doing, so they'll have a cutoff. But I'm, I'm just hoping that we're inclusive of everyone and every senior would want to go. It's a phenomenal trip. Someday, I'll chaperone it.
My only tip is, don't, don't get sucked into the photos with the people and character. They just want your money.
And there are quite a few down there.
There are so many. I think it's, I think it's a cool opportunity. I know Dylan would have been jealous because his senior trip, he's like, "Yeah, I don't want to go." So he didn't bother. But I'm excited that it went successfully enough last year that you guys are trying to replicate it this year, so that's a good sign, so. Very cool, thank you.
Jeff, and then Brendan?
Is walking and bus the only way you transport, you don't go down into the subway, do you?
No.
No, it's tough, tough to supervise that many kids in a subway.
I feel better, thank you.
Again, kind of asking more as a parent, anything, what roughly is the cost looking like right now? I mean, I know you guys don't have like a final price, but you're also assuming there's going to need to be spending money, or when we get the price for this, is this going to include those activities? Are those going to be extra? Like, what's roughly the price?
So last, last year, the group decided on the Spyscape Museum, and the way it worked out, they were only charged $25 to go. And then they brought their own spending money for food and whatever after that. But yeah, they only had to pay twenty-five upfront. So it, it will depend. I would imagine that a Broadway show would probably be a little bit more expensive than-
You get to get to Hamilton, I swear to you.
Sounds fabulous.
So do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, five zero zero. Good luck, have fun on your trip.
Yeah.
Be safe.
Thanks.
Okay, next we have the Fall Sports Report. I see Mr. Rodrick's here.
Well, Mr. Rodrick's coming up. Certainly want to thank him and his secretary, Sandy Barbosa, for, again, an outstanding fall season from an administrative standpoint. I know our students definitely benefited from their work behind the scenes, and obviously, great job with this report. I'll turn it over to Mr. Rodrick.
Thank you, appreciate it. The volleyball team was a big highlight of the fall. They, they made it to the Elite Eight. I'm not sure if they've ever been that far before. They lost to the eventual state champion, Bourne. It was a great season, a lot of awards. The football team was another. I thought it was a good thing. We had almost forty kids. It's been a long time since we had almost forty kids on a football team. And we're able to play, I think, four JV games, and our goal is to play more than that this year. It was good. Inside ended up getting Coach of the Year in the conference because of that. He went three, they went three and one in the conference. And, and our volleyball coach, obviously she's outstanding, got Ball Coach of the Year again. It was good. It was, you know, it's, the Mayflower League's been good in many ways for us. We were more competitive with a lot of schools. And in the league, we were fourteen and fifteen, which in the winter, it's usually better. And the spring should be very, very good in some sports, to be honest with you. So we're, everything I think's gone pretty well.
Any questions? Joyce?
It says that no eighth graders played football. Is that true?
There was, there was one, I believe, and then it didn't, that didn't work out.
Most eighth graders, because of their size, play Tigers. Even when we had freshmen, it's very, there were always a handful of freshmen because of their size and their weight that would play it. It's actually a good thing, frankly, that they're playing for the Tigers, because to play a sub varsity game as an eighth grader who might be a hundred pounds soaking wet, it's, it's a liability. So I think that's probably the only sport that really we kind of push kids to play, the youth program, in eighth grade.
It did help that we had a JV team, so we had, a lot of the younger kids got to play against kids in their own category, so to speak. And that, we're hoping that we'll, we'll continue to do that. I've already got, five games already lined up for next year already. And hopefully, we'll have more than that. But then, hopefully, we'll keep snowballing, because the biggest problem is when you're fourteen or fifteen years old playing against eighteen and nineteen-year-old kids sometimes, that's, that just wasn't good. So now, I think hopefully this is going to even it out, and we'll have even as many kids last year, hopefully more.
Well, so if an eighth grader wanted to play, would they play JV or varsity? Or is there a freshman?
They could play either, but obviously, I mean, they'd have to be a pretty big kid to be playing varsity. They would, they would play sub varsity. And, and we have had eighth graders in the past, you know, the, the bigger students that are able to do that physically. But it's, it, there's usually the few and five between.
And then I just have another question. So the season, I think the total cost was a hundred and fifty-three thousand. So I went to the budget, and there are three line items that I saw in the budget for athletics that equal a hundred and fifty-eight thousand.
Well, we got a hundred and fifty-four, six, seven, I mean-
I think you probably didn't look at the salary one. I think you probably looked at the, there's an athletic equipment, athletic supply, and athletic other. I think what you're probably not seeing is the salary line item, which, which would make that number work for you.
All right, all right.
And also, the salary increased midway through the season.
Well, it did.
So that changed things.
Right, and, and they'll increase-
Superintendent, it was nice. So we ended up getting a nice boost for-
Thank them ultimately.
So it was, it was nice, especially for our volleyball team. Volleyball was grossly underpaid, and now they're back to where they should be. And everybody got, and if it stays the way it is with just a normal pay raise that a teacher gets, we'll be fine. You know, we'll be fine where we are right now.
So that, and that's great for the coaches. Just means that the fall, the winter and spring season, so you're saying that those costs will be absorbed by that other line item, which I don't really-
So the, it's the salaries that I, I think you, you don't see.
Right, I wasn't looking at a salary.
So that's, and as you can kind of carry those numbers over when you get to that expense line item. And then the other thing, in the spring, a lot of the spring budget is, we use the revenue from the revolving to cover a lot of our spring expenses. Because to your point, when the winter season is over, we will have exhausted a lot of those line items. And we really rely on the gates from football, volleyball, basketball to carry us through for the spring season for our expenses. And what's happened over the last few years, as you all can understand, you see the reports, our transportation budget has really unfortunately been underfunded and has gone through the roof to the point where you've approved in the past some transfers for us to cover those costs in the spring.
And one day like that, I deal with Kristen Flynn a lot, has done a great job. We have this new thing called Arbor to Pay. So now if you work our games, you can get paid literally the next day. That is really been a great thing. And, you know, she does a great job right away. As soon as they come in, we get it going, boom, they get paid. That makes it easier for us to get officials. People want to come here. Instead of the other way where it went through so many channels, and by the time they got paid, it was sometimes-
Well after the season.
Yes.
But, and, and we kind of had to jump on that because of, all the area schools are using it. So it was one of those things where you don't want to be the odd person out. And to Ed's point, like, the officials want to get paid like right away. And when you can do that very quickly, what happens is the better officials want to come to your school, which is important. You want to put the best officials in front of our student athletes. So it has been a huge help to us.
So, sorry, just one last question, because you brought up transportation. Have you had any trouble with buses and getting kids to games and?
No, the only issue we have is, we like to leave at 2:30 a lot.
Right.
It just isn't working out, because most of the time, the person that's taking them at 2:30 has a final run somewhere else, so they don't get there till quarter of, ten of. So what I'm going to do in the spring here, I'm going to start having four o'clock starts for some of our games, because I don't want the kids to get out early all the time.
No, we don't.
If we leave at, if we leave at quarter, if we leave at quarter of, ten of, but they're not getting there to, you know, right before warm-up time. So it's boom, and then they start the game. So that's the only issue, and they can't, it is what it is. They can't get there until literally quarter of three, ten of three, depending on who the driver is.
Right.
And we go from there.
Well, that's what I meant, the timing, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
Marie's done a great job, and her, her new secretary's been great. I think it's been a pretty smooth, at least the second half of the season felt really smooth.
Yeah, I'm not blaming them at all.
No, no, they're, they're working hard.
Have the other schools been okay with that?
Yeah, well, yeah.
They understand?
Like, yes, like, even though, you know, I'm, the Wareham AD, most of the ADs I've dealt with over the years were all accommodating, because we all have different issues. So they might, they might have you with something else, so I'll help them out and vice versa. So a lot of times, especially on school things, there's some schools, they won't let their kids leave early. So they can't start the game until after four o'clock or whatever. So if a school calls me and does that, that's what we do. I mean, you know, that's, I have found that very few ADs won't accommodate you. So we'll, we'll try to work stuff like that out.
Okay, thank you.
Jeff?
Plus, you get caught in front of the middle school when you're, when you leave a little later, so that exacerbates the lateness problem. So I agree completely with the way you're resolving this.
We like to leave like ten past, quarter past two sometimes, but that's not realistic because of the, the traffic. So that's why we have to leave at like 1:50 before all that starts. And then that's kind of early, you know, so, but it is what it is. That's so, we try to work it out the best way.
But what I wanted to point out, because I suspect that even some people on this committee, and certainly the general public don't realize, is that when we made the move to Mayflower, it really put a burden, and I can speak specifically to tennis, on it. So if it was, if it was just up to Mayflower, I would literally have four matches this spring, four. But thanks to Ed, I'm going to have nineteen. So that, every one of those represents multiple phone calls to make it happen. So I really appreciate the work you're doing. I'm sure it's not just tennis.
No, I mean, but you know, when I was a boys' coach in New Bedford, we had four games. And I was, it was up to me to get the game, so I learned along, a little while ago, how to try to do this. So, but it's still, and what I'm trying to do now is develop relationships with these schools. And we try to talk to our coaches, just remember, you know, if you, you got a big lead, use some common sense, things of that nature, act accordingly. We want to keep them on our schedule so that we can go year after year. And it's, it's worked out pretty good.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, April?
I just wanted to make a point to, you know, congratulate all the kids that our overall GPA for our student athletes was ninety point five. So I think that's a huge testament that the kids are taking the time to not only, you know, practice and, and, you know, kind of show up to their games, but that they're also, you know, really bringing in some of the higher GPAs in the, in the school. So I think that's a huge testament to the kids' dedication to both school and their athletics.
And I'm surprised, I, I first started coming, I was always surprised by this, but it's continuous every single year, and it's, it really is something. It's a, quite a thing every year to have a high GPA, high eighties, low nineties, something like that. For a hundred and sixty-five kids, that's pretty good.
And that's part of our eligibility policy. They need to pass classes if they're going to be student athletes.
Which is a little tougher than a lot of other schools.
It's the toughest in the area, and maybe one of the toughest in the state. But I stand by it, and, you know, I want the students to have that GPA, to be able to have choices when they graduate.
Brendan?
One of the things, along with the GPA, I really liked seeing the community service that each team did. And I wasn't aware that that was part of the requirement, but I'm really impressed to see, you know, thinking of these students that they're not only, you know, sports, you know, they're not just athletes, but they're student leaders as well. And that's really important for a lot of the sports programs, too, to recruit more kids, you know, to make these programs grow, seeing that they're not just good students, but, you know, good athletes, but good students as well, and good citizens. I just think that's really impressive.
We've been doing that for about fifteen years, and we felt it was important. You know, the town supports the students financially to have these programs. We want them to give back and, and have that kind of respect for the town. So it's been an important part of the athletic program for a long time, and it's, as you can see, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, I mean, like, I was just noticing that the, like, the football team helped coach the, the Tigers. I mean, that's one hand washing the other, you know, that those Tigers are going to end up being on the, you know, football- up being on the, you know, football team eventually. And I remember back when I was a athlete that...
I remember that too.
By the time we graduated Tigers, we'd been playing together for five years. No wonder, you know, that's why we were at the Super Bowl. So I'm glad to see that going, you know, and bringing that back again. So great job.
Well, athletics should be more than just winning and losing in sports. It should be life lessons that hopefully you learn from sports that when you, when you go moving on in life, there's other things that you can use.
All right, on that note, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks Ed.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Palladino, don't go anywhere. Would you like to be joined up at the table?
Yes, please. I'd like to have our administration and department heads join us and I'll introduce them. And while they're getting situated, I just want to thank our school council, our student advisory council, our students for their input specifically with our surveys that we send out for our course of studies. And obviously our administrators and department heads that are here today that work tirelessly every day, not just in the course of studies. And they're going to be speaking quite a bit about the changes in their departments. So I just want to introduce Amy Dionne. Amy handles, on my far left, she handles the business department, fine and applied arts, and the science department. So she's going to have a lot to say about those departments in a few minutes. Andrea Cannon, who is the assistant principal in charge of special education. Kim Kavicki, who handles, assistant principal, who handles instruction and curriculum. You already know me. Mr. Murray, who handles the humanities and JROTC. And Christine Thomas is our newest department head who handles math and foreign language. So I want to thank all of them for being here tonight. And you're going to have a chance to hear them speak and hopefully you'll have a few questions for them at the end. So we'll go through this and I think you've always appreciated us highlighting the changes. And then when we go through the changes at the end, if you have any questions for any of us, we're more than happy to answer those questions. And I'm going to just preface this by saying, I'm just going to say once, we're removing all the IBs. So as we go through this, you'll see a lot of lines through IB courses and IB offerings. And, you know, certainly I think that will streamline things because that's probably the largest change in the hand, in the course of studies. So besides the obvious, we're going to obviously have some changes to the table of contents and we're going to have obviously an update to the years. I'm going to move on quickly to page two and just tell you that this is a great document for you to take a look at for all the electives we offer. I think it's pretty impressive. And it does go on to almost a third of page three. And these are all the courses we can offer for electives. Please keep in mind, we're going to be showing you a lot of courses. Ultimately, what we run is going to be based on student interest and then obviously making sure we have staff that can staff the class. When the students have the course selection sheet, which is basically the sheet of all courses that we can run, if we put it on the course of selection, it means that we have a staff member that can teach it and it's appropriately certified and qualified. So some of these courses that we may have and we may go over, may not run because of student interest. Most of these we can run based on our staffing. And obviously staffing levels will have an impact on that. So we'll continue on and I'm, like I said, I'm going to, I'm going to kind of move through IB and the pathways on page four and five and moving on to six and seven as well. Those are just deleted. We are moving away from the community college career and life public safety and we are moving into environmental and life science pathways. And I'm going to have Ms. Dionne talk a little bit about that and we're going to be bouncing back and forth between people. But she's going to talk a little bit about this pathway and we received, as you are aware, a DESI grant to cover a science teacher for this pathway and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Dionne.
Yeah, you've already seen the bulk of this in the fall when I came and presented at that time. Since then, we have, through discussions with the science department, added a few more courses, which when science comes up, I'll explain a little bit more in depth at that time. But those have been added as choices to, to part of the pathway, the career-related courses that they could take. There is an EMT course that will be part of it, that sort of was in the public safety one, but we felt it really aligned well with the life sciences aspect in our anatomy and physiology class and that they could take that course and get certification as, for EMT. So that's been added. The grant actually references the work-based learning program, Massachusetts work-based learning that DESI has. So those are sort of skills they wish students to have to be able to enter the workforce successfully. That's been added, as you'll see, into the, the business department. So if there's any, I'm not sure if you want to ask any questions about this now?
We're going to hold them to the end, okay?
Hold them to the end, okay.
Yes. If that's okay.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So again, we're going to skip through the next couple of pages with the IB removals and we'll actually go right into page 13, which has the changes in the business department. So I'll turn it back over to Amy again.
So in the business department, we're getting rid of some courses that are no longer taught. They're not really, they're not really relevant at this time and we are adding fashion marketing too. We're adding the basic business communications, which is part of that environmental and life science pathway. And I feel like I'm missing one. The childcare practicum is being added to that as well.
And I'd like to jump on that a little bit, the childcare class. We are working in collaboration with the Wareham Elementary School to potentially offer a preschool, a program at the high school that students that have taken the childcare class would be able to go in and have a practical experience. And so that is definitely, one of our goals was to offer more hands-on type electives and so that would definitely be one that's aligned with that. There's obviously some infrastructure work that needs to be done and we are working on that as we speak. So more to come on that as we, as we get going. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Murray, who has some exciting classes that we're adding in JROTC. And it's really a result of the eighth graders being in the building and I'm excited about this. So I'm going to turn over to Mr. Murray.
Right, so we had a need based on the eighth grade interest actually that we've been anticipating for a couple of years. So some eighth grade students took a full year of eighth grade leadership and they, they received some LET I credits. And so that has made them end up as seniors with kind of maxed out on their JROTC courses. So Colonel and Sergeant are developing, hoping to develop this LET V leadership education and training that would tap into the kids that are still in the program as seniors who've been through all four levels of leadership. And the other one is something that Colonel Stanton has been really desired to put together for us and that is the U.S. Military History elective. Some of his students have clamored for that. And so that's going to be pretty cool. I'm looking forward to it. I might have to audit that one myself. It's very, sounds like an awesome course.
Okay, we'll then move on to PhysEd and we have a new class, two new classes in PhysEd. One is called officiating 101. And we've been working quite a bit on this, Mr. Gardner and myself. Taunton High School has run this for a couple of years with great success. And we have quite a few officials that officiate sports in our building that I hope will be maybe some guest speakers. What we're going to do with this course, if the students are interested, it'll be for grades 10 through 12 because they have to be a certain age to work, obviously. And we have a curriculum that we are going to use called Raff's Rep. And we're going to go with soccer, basketball, and flag football as the three courses that we'll run this year. We're going to align this class with a physical education class so that when the students need the practical experience outside of the classroom, they'll actually be officiating games in the physical education classroom for soccer, basketball, and flag football. Students will come out with a certificate and if they want to continue outside of the classroom and do this as a part-time job, they'll actually have to take a national test to get certified. And in Taunton, the students over the last year have made a combined over $40,000 in officiating for the high school and the youth programs in town. I hope that we'll have kids, when we see like the freshman basketball team, the unified basketball team, some of these kids will be involved in that, maybe JV soccer. And then the spring, as we talked about with the Tigers, there's a big flag football program. And I know our football coach is involved in that, so hoping those kids would go and officiate those events. There's really, you know, when you think about officials, which you kind of don't realize, there's a lot of soft skills that translate into the students' success, not just in high school, but post-high school. So we're excited about, about that and I think there's going to be interest. And it's a nice, again, we're trying to create a few hands, hands-on type electives and this aligns with that. Moving on to unified physical education, we've had great success with our unified athletic program. And we have an adaptive PhysEd class that we run all year long. And sometimes we have it by itself and sometimes we'll have another physical education class running concurrently with that class. With the unified physical education program, we'll still be able to have the adaptive PhysEd students, but we'll be able to have mentor-type students that would be willing to work with those kids, that would sign up for this class and collaborate with those kids throughout the physical education program. And it would be a semesterized class and we'd have some kids come in for the first half and different kids come in for the second half. And I think it's going to be a great thing for us and for those students that are interested. And this would be a great opportunity for students that might be interested in going into the special education field or maybe the childcare field. There'd be some great opportunities for them there. So those are the two new classes for physical education and health. I'll now turn it back over to Mr. Murray, who is going to talk about a couple of new courses, not just electives that he's offering in the English department.
We have a very popular mythology elective. It's always filled to the brim twice a year. And that teacher is interested in developing a dystopian literature class that she also has a passion in this type of literature. And as you'll see in the course description, it lists some of the, some of the classics and there's, it's a, it's a very vibrant genre right now, especially among the young adult crowd. So I think that would be a very cool and popular elective as well if that is approved. And then similar to the JROTC course, we have students that need English courses in, an English course rather, in their senior year because they've maxed out on all the English courses from nine through 12 by virtue of being dual enrollment in, in their eighth grade year. So I'm actually kind of spitballing this right now because I had students that were, you know, again, a small crowd, some of whom you may know. In this small course that I came up with the incredibly inspiring name, Senior English Seminar and Honors. And so we, we've been doing like literary criticism and, you know, stuff, trying to do more college writing. We did the college essay unit just like they do in Senior English. And everything that I've listed there is things that I've actually been, have done already. Although right now, over, over the, over the break, it seemed, I don't know why, but I just decided to start doing the Iceman Cometh, it just seemed appropriate. So that's what we're doing now and we'll see if that makes the cut for next year if this is approved. But I'm having fun developing sort of an upper level class that is meant to bridge, you know, 12th grade English with college English and some college writing and get them thinking like kids, you know, who need to read literary criticism and be able to talk about it.
All right, we're going to turn it back over to Amy Dionne again. I told her this would be an Amy Dionne show and we have the fine arts. She has some changes there that she's going to highlight.
As was already mentioned, IB art is removed and then the only changes are to video production one and video production two, just to make the description more concise. And then if I go right into music...
Please do.
Finale is no longer going to be offered because the software is obsolete. It's not there anymore. And then we'll go right into science, right?
I think we go into world language first.
Oh, math, yep, okay.
So Christine Thomas is going to talk about the world language offerings that we, changes that we have?
So every year we, we send a survey out to the kids to ask them what classes they want to see us offer. And one of the biggest classes that they've ever wanted was American Sign Language. So we're really happy that we're going to be able to offer that this year through a virtual academy. So it will be taught hybrid. We'll have a teacher online two days a week teaching and then the other days they'll be learning asynchronously with a, with a world language teacher in the room. And we're hoping that this will catch on. I think the kids are going to be really excited about it and we'll be able to grow the program and be able to offer American Sign Language too, hopefully the following year.
So I'd like to dovetail on that because it has been very frustrating to see that for the last three years as our number one choice, the student select. And then be, you know, we're going to give student choice, but they're choosing this and I have no way of producing it. I was really excited to go over to Martha's Vineyard on a NYS visit to see this in play. And when we walk in, they give us the list of classes and when they're meeting and I saw that one, I said, I don't care which one you guys want to go to, but I'm going to this one. And, and they've been doing it for a couple of years now and it's amazing. And I said, this is the answer to what we want and what we need. And I'm hoping at some point in time, we'll get to a point where we need so many sections, we'll be able to have a foreign language teacher in the American Sign Language classroom. It's tough to find a teacher to teach one-sixth of a contract. But, you know, if we get to a point where maybe we're three-sixths, you know, maybe we could find someone. I'm confident when we're 1.0 FTE, we'll find someone. So I'm hoping that this will allow us to build it slowly to the point where at some point we can say, we need to shift money and hire a full-time American Sign Language teacher. I think that's going to happen within the next three years. But we'll see how it goes with the selection process. But I'm excited that we can kind of meet the students' requests and, and offer it this year with confidence that it can run. So I'm hearing from my student advisory council that there are a lot of students that are interested in this. I hope it doesn't blow up too quickly because I really want to, kind of like we do with the pilot programs, we start off small and then we build it. But they may, they may change that vision. So I'm going to turn it back over to Christine to talk about some changes with the math department.
The biggest change we have in math is we're going to now offer pre-calculus AP. It's a relatively new AP class that just started, I think, a couple of years ago. So we're going to be able to offer that for the students to take before they go into calculus, AP calculus. And I think that's the only change I have for that.
Great. So moving away from math, we're going to go back to Amy and talk about science. And we've got quite a few changes that I know everyone's excited about in science.
All right, so the pathway program really has sort of ignited some excitement for all of us and the science folks really have put their heads together and are, are thinking up ways to really create high, high-interest experiences for the students. So what you'll see in the grade 10, if you're looking at the chart, that kind of lists out what each grade level is, is available. As grade 10 students would have access to three different courses that would be semesterized, one being experimental biology, biology for everyday life, and the human body. Students would need to take two of these three, two, and they would, it would count towards a lab science. So those would be options for students as sophomores and they could really dive into more hands-on experiences, you know, specifically detailed for, for those students. And then some additional electives have been added, building on the marine bio one, we now have, are hoping to offer marine bio two. And then there are two other sort of higher-level electives for, specifically for, for kids in grades 11 and 12, and that would be from alchemy to atoms and then DNA decoded. And then down the bottom there, as part of our pathway is the emergency medical technical course, which students would be able to get certification in EMT.
And we've actually, we've had Wareham EMS, Dr. Deandra and myself in a, in a meeting already and we've been in touch with Chief Kelly in the fire department and they are all very excited that we're offering this and could potentially have students working for them in the future. So the EMT class, I'm hoping that takes off as well. We'll then move back to Mr. Murray to talk about our social studies changes.
Sure. So we had a, Mr. Palladino ran a survey with students, gauging interest for electives and one of the recommendations from students was a philosophy course. So we are offering an introduction to philosophy course potentially and as well... and as well as the AP African-American Studies, which is, I'm pretty sure that was also on the list.
It was.
Okay.
But also, we're trying to, we have these IB classes coming off. We're trying to make sure we have some offset with some additional AP. You heard the pre-calculus. We've now got the African-American Studies as well.
Yeah, that's the two.
And then, I'm going to have Ms. Kavicki talk about the online courses that we're changing. And I think our librarian is doing a wonderful job of really streamlining our online offering. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kavicki to talk about those.
So, I've been working very closely with our library media specialist. He's very passionate about sort of looking at all of the different aspects of the online learning opportunities for students, making sure we've updated it, making sure that it's really fitting their needs well. And so, he did a deep dive and then met with me about the options in edgenuity for students, actually came up with 20 potential options that could be offered. So, we did a separate survey to students for just those 20 options, narrowed it down to the top five that were classes that we wanted to make sure weren't the same as the in-person classes that we offer. It really added something different to the curriculum, but was also within the realm of what students are interested in and possible career opportunities. So, with that, we came up with a business law class, which ties nicely to the business curriculum that we have, but it kind of goes off on a tangent there. And then, looked at some career options, careers in logistics planning and management, construction careers, careers in allied health. And then, there was a need or want for some teaching and training careers from the students as well. So, very excited about those opportunities. We usually have about 40 to 50 students on average that will, in a given semester, take one online course. So, this should really broaden the opportunities that they have.
And that's it for the changes. We'll certainly entertain any questions you may have. April?
So, thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
I'm still very sad about the loss of IB. But I do think you guys did a great job in finding comparable-sounding or appealing solutions for those students that would have taken those classes. My first question, with the ASL class, which I know every year you've said, "That's the survey."
It's been frustrating. I'm not frustrated anymore in that respect.
I think I've been on the school committee. You've mentioned that the students want it. So, with this being virtual or hybrid, rather, how does that work from like a cost and a budget standpoint for us? Like, are we paying into a program as if it were a teacher? Like, is this counted as like a salary? Or is this like a program? And with it being hybrid, when they are asynchronous in the classroom, do we have a staff member that is able to teach the ASL in person in conjunction with this online system? So, that's my first question.
Sure. So, you know, in education, we often replicate good things when we see them. And so, I am totally replicating what I saw in action because it's successful and it works. So, we would have a foreign language teacher that would be in the classroom, that would be in there to support the students, specifically when they're asynchronous. They would also be in there responsible for management of the classroom, attendance, grading, et cetera. The goal is, and to answer your question, there is a fee per student, a small fee, nominal fee, similar to what we would pay for what Ms. Kavicki just described in regards to the online courses through edgenuity. The goal is that this will allow us to build the program within a few years to the point where we won't need the online synchronous teacher. We'll have a full-time ASL foreign language teacher, I predict, within three years.
Okay. And then, my second question is, again, the career pathways, I think, is an excellent option for a lot of kids. And I love that we have, you know, like culinary and woodworking and electric, all the things that we have as more hands-on options as electives for students. So, with the EMT certification, who is that the same thing? Is that like, are we paying like a salary of someone who has the credentials to teach that class? Or are we utilizing our public safety in the town of Wareham to assist us with that? And then, with the certification of that, like, do they get? It's clearly not a full EMT program that they would get once they've graduated or gone out, you know, post-high school. So, like, where does that fall for them? Is it like prerequisites? Is it considered like a partial EMT? Or wouldn't they complete that program? Are they going to be a certified EMT, you know, able to like graduate and go join the Fire Department? Like, I'm just curious how that's going to work.
So, we, same thing as the ASL, there's going to be a fee per student. We're basing it on 15 students. And if you notice on there, the grade level piece, that's an important piece to discuss. And I'm glad you asked a question on it. So, this is a course, that's a full-year course. So, the EMT courses are roughly, I believe it was about 110 or 120 hours, which works out really well with our schedule. Will be just a little bit more than that. And the students, once they turn 18, will be able to take the test and be an EMT. And they would be able to work as an EMT through the various ambulance companies and also potentially with the Fire Department. And speaking with Chief Kelly, he was pretty excited that these kids might be kids that might come in as call firefighters and have that area of expertise and maybe even go on and be, you know, paramedics and do some advanced life support training. So, they can take the test at the end. That would be a cost they would have to absorb. But we would have instructors in that would teach them, get them to a point where they're, at the end of the school year, ready to take the test. Obviously, there's some practice tests that are done in their last term. And once they hit 18, they can take the test. So, we didn't want to have 10th graders in there for that reason. We were afraid of regression. And by the time they turn 18, they might forget a lot of this information and may not pass the exam. So, it's definitely an upperclassman, junior and senior class with the assumption that when they're done, they would take the exam and get certified and potentially have a career in that field.
So, another crossover question. Whereas you have the officiating 101, at most games, you also have an EMT present at most of the games. Is that something?
Trainer, athletic trainer.
Right. But is that something that you're looking to like also like kind of cross at some point with the two programs? That you could have someone who would be possibly like an overlap with that for athletic training as something that was thought about, or is that not?
We haven't really thought about that. I kind of have another plan for my athletic training issue. But it's certainly something that, once we get these students certified, we could look at. And, you know, if they need hours or things like that to get certified, certainly that's something. I know when I was coaching, we had a trainer and the EMTs at all football games.
Yeah, we did for Tigers, too.
Sure. So, but to meet the letter of the MIA rules, we have to have a certified athletic trainer at all contact events. And I think it's good practice to have them at all events, at home events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Jeff? Let me start with, is it fair to say that the curriculum, not necessarily with the staff, because I understand that that can be really difficult. But does the curriculum exist for all those courses?
Not the new ones.
Okay. But for all the old ones? But for all the old ones, the curriculum exists?
And we have, one thing we've been, I think, as a group, working really hard at is not only making sure we have the curriculum, making sure it's available digitally and we have an order of when it was last revised. Our goal, we've kind of taken a step back since the pandemic on revisions of curriculum. One of our goals this year is to really, we have about three or four in mind that we really want to work on in June. We're hoping for no snow days this year. So, we have a couple of weeks in June to thank you, Dr. DeAndrea, on that in advance.
He's guaranteed it.
You heard it too, right?
I guarantee.
Well, even if there's only one or two, we could still work around that. But I have found, in my experience, that the month of June is a great time to do curriculum. Once you start getting into July and August, it's difficult. And during the school year, there's just too many things going on to really be able to focus on curriculum. So, our goal is, we have this list, we know what we need to work on. And at the top of the list are new electives that we're going to be running to make sure we have curriculum for those.
The second question. I noticed, I think I remember seeing, personal finance is now incorporated into business.
Sure.
And it's a requirement, correct?
It's a requirement, but it can also count as a business. They have to have five credits in business.
Right.
What's, the reason for that, frankly, is because we've cut a business teacher and there are not enough offerings. And oftentimes, kids have trouble finding a course that fits their schedule because there are not offerings for business every single period.
And I'm sure I missed it, but is there economics in the program of studies?
We've had economics in the past. We do not have a teacher that's qualified to teach that at this point.
I have been, I know it doesn't really matter, but personally dismayed by the lack of adult understanding of economics.
Sure.
And it would seem to me, we would be preparing our kids, even if they didn't go to college, okay? We'd be preparing our kids tremendously better if they had some kind of Economics 101 as a part of the requirements, not an elective, believe it or not. I wanted a requirement, okay? Because I think the level of ignorance, it just hurts people to be so ignorant of something so important. There's a famous political commentator who says, his famous expression is, "It's the economy, stupid." And we probably all heard that expression, right? Well, yeah, except that if you don't understand the economy, then you are stupid in terms of your ability to understand everything that people are saying about something so important. So, we don't even have any staff members at the moment who could teach economics.
Right. And I'd love to offer micro and macroeconomics at the AP level while we're at it. You know, it's an unbelievable course, both of them. There is, you know, there is a unit in the personal finance that covers.
I thought maybe it was a little bit in there.
Yeah, there is, there is. But to your point, you know, it'd be amazing to have a full-time economics teacher that could offer, you know, Intro to Economics, Economics 101, the AP Economics, Micro and Macro. I mean, it would be phenomenal. And it would be a great alignment with our business program, but.
Awesome.
Yeah.
It's critical.
Right, I know. But every year, talking about cutting teachers, it's tough to add something on.
I get it. I get it. But to me, it deserves a high priority. And I know that means, I know I'm saying with no knowledge of what that means, that if we have to prioritize something out to get economics in, it makes some sense. I don't know how the superintendent feels, but I just think it's critically important.
I agree. I agree.
So, maybe, maybe we can add it to the budget subcommittee discussion, Mr. Chair.
Why not?
Yeah, why not? Finally, but before I do, I just want to thank everybody for being here. I know I could ask a lot more questions and then I'd just get in trouble with the chair. Bye. Not that that's bothered me in the past. You can all thank me. And I did speak to the superintendent before I'm about to ask for something. When you come before us on a, how often do you come before us?
It seems like every two weeks.
Well, you, but not the rest of them.
Sure, sure.
I would love to see a list of the, by semester. I would love to see the courses that you're actually providing that semester and how many kids were in it. I've been told that it shouldn't be a lot of work for you to do that.
It's a little bit of work because, like, Amy has a class that has three sections. So, we'll have to take, I believe it's like AP Art, Art 2, is it? And then, there's another class.
IB.
IB, yeah. So, it's not as easy as just extracting it from Power School because that's not unique to a lot of elective courses. We have sometimes multiple sections. You might have an honors and a CP level in together. And they differentiate that instruction and the expectations. It's not impossible. It just would take a little time.
I would appreciate it. And if you decide it's too difficult.
It's not too difficult.
Okay.
It's not.
I did check before I asked.
All right. But we'd love to share with you what we decide that we're going to be able to offer from the course of studies as well.
Well, what you're able to offer is very impressive.
I think so.
What actually ends up getting taught is the practical thing I'm looking for and how many kids are benefiting from it.
We could definitely have that for you in the summer that we know for sure late spring.
I'm talking about this.
Oh, from this current year?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you've completed already two semesters, right?
As of tomorrow, we'll have completed one semester, two terms.
Two, all right. By term, by semester, whichever makes more sense.
Sounds good.
Okay? And thank you for being here. Joyce?
I just want to say, yes, thank you to everyone who's here. I mean, we get to see Scott all the time. But I love having the rest of you. No, no, no. But you know, I love having the rest of you here. My first question is for Amy, the grant, the DESI grant for the pathways. So, that's providing a science teacher, which those science classes, very exciting to be able to offer those. So, this teacher, do you expect that funding to go on for a long time?
Well, in conjunction with Scott, he's worked, it's coming out of, it's adding into our budget. I'm not sure of the correct wording.
That's correct.
Year by year, that teacher is being put into the budget.
Okay.
They phase it out over.
Phasing it out.
Kristin, how many years is it? Four or five years?
It does phase out, but we'll have it for next year, I believe.
Yeah, it's there for next year. And then, they kind of go like, you know, 80%. And so, it's, you know how all grants are. They give you the money upfront expecting to maintain it after the fact.
But four or five years is a.
It's a nice phase out. I'd rather it be 100% for the next 10 years. But it's a way to get things going. And then, as long as there's student interest, you know, we'll keep it going.
Okay. You talk about the online classes, so the 40 students. Are they taking them because they wanted those classes or because they had to, you know, work their schedule?
So, it's a few different reasons. I would say the majority are looking to take the classes. Sometimes, it's a case of they weren't able to fit, you know, a business elective or a gym elective or something like that in their schedule. Sometimes, it's a case of they needed, you know, like with health, they maybe haven't had a health class. They come to us as a junior. We don't want to put them in a Health 9 class as a junior, just age discrepancy and whatnot. So, something like that. And then, oftentimes, they're just excited about having the option to take a new elective. It's very much independent learning in the sense that they're doing everything. There is a grading component for the library media specialist, but otherwise, the students, it's totally driven by them. They move at their pace. They can get ahead in the course, many of them do. And then, it hopefully lets them explore a topic that we might not have the student interest to run a full section of, like an in-person section, for example, so.
I think it's a great opportunity, too, because these kids are going to be, many of them in college. And at the very least, they're going to have a hybrid class, if not an online class. So, I think to expose them to that platform at a young age, I think, is really awesome. The only frustrating thing that, you know, that I have with it is there are some cases where there are no electives for that student that period. And we kind of have to force them into that. And that's kind of frustrating. But I think that's definitely the minority of the cases. It's, the majority are, as Kim explained them.
So, you talk about electives and, so this is not going to be a popular question, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Over the course of many conversations, many different topics, right? We've heard you talk about students who are struggling sometimes in electives. Sometimes, you know, it's an academic elective that, you know, just. And then, other times, we hear you talk about kids. And sometimes, it's because they started the high school in eighth grade. By the time they get to be a senior, they have trouble filling up their schedules. So, that's why you tell me I should vote yes on senior privileges.
That does help out a lot with those electives, by the way.
Quite a segue.
But that leads me to my question. Have you ever considered going from eight classes to seven?
So, to do that, we have, to answer your question. We have thought about that and had some informal conversations on that. The issue is, then the teachers will go back to teaching five classes. So, there really wouldn't be a gain in, we'd have a lot less classes. We'd be offering a lot less electives. And we'd also have to look at our graduation requirement, which is currently, you know, we talked about the fact that the students have a great GPA that are involved in student athletics. We also have one of the most rigorous requirements to graduate in regards to courses that they have to take that are required at our local level and state level and total number of credits to graduate. Our transcripts are very impressive when they come out of the high school and these students are competing with, again, this is competing now internationally, not just nationally. So, I don't see the gain in going back to seven because we're actually going to be having less sections available each period because we'd have to go back to the five, teachers teach five out of seven.
I guess I don't understand enough about. I guess I don't understand enough about the scheduling process to understand why that would be true. Okay.
Well, if every teacher teaches five, and say you had 50 teachers that teach, that's 250 sections. If every teacher teaches six, now that's 300 sections we can offer. So, that's a net gain of 50 sections, and most of those sections are going to be elective-based classes because we have to teach the core classes. So, I, I, I think the only positive thing that I can ascertain from that is the students would only have to focus on seven classes instead of eight. That would be the positive, but the exposure to some of these electives that we have been rolling out and continue trying to roll out would be decreased.
I, I, you know that I would never imply that we should lower our expectations.
I know you better than that.
No, thank you. I'm just trying, you know, so we have these students, so you say, oh, they have transcripts that are robust, or they're having senior privileges when they're a senior because there's no class for them to take, so.
I think it's two different things. I think the, the senior privileges, I think it's a reward that students work towards that, and it's something that like they, you know, talk about as sophomores, like, well, I want to continue to have, to take care of my coursework, to have that, that option. And frankly, most of the kids that are in senior privileges are taking very high-level courses. So, they're staying in the school and studying because they're taking three AP and two IB courses, or they're doing dual enrollment with Bridgewater. It's not the kids you would think that would be on senior privileges. These are pretty strong students that are very focused. It's not the kids taking, you know, all CP and just running out to McDonald's at lunch because they can, these are-
No, 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 I'm not implying that. Clearly, we have Emma on senior privileges.
Yeah, there you go, perfect example.
Right, no, 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 and I wasn't trying to turn it into a conversation about senior privileges. I was just using that as an example of a place where we say, like, kids can't fill up their schedules. So, that's why I'm asking that question about seven classes.
It's tough for the seniors, but if you saw, we have a few electives now that are strictly for upperclassmen that I think will maybe flip that script a little bit. And, but I will tell you though, when you have, you know, 30 kids on senior privileges, that's a whole section, if not two sections of electives that you don't have to run. So, there is like a residual effect to having the senior privileges.
Again, I wasn't, I didn't mean, I, I know I referred to senior privileges-
We're coming back in the spring on senior privileges, by the way. Jamie's already got us on the agenda for May.
But that's not what my question was about. So, we've also talked about class sizes, and some of the class sizes at the high school are small, and some are big, I'm not implying, right?
Right.
What would that do to, to those smaller class sizes?
To go on to five? To go on to five classes, teachers teaching five out of seven?
Seven instead of eight, yeah.
Well, the, the theory, I can't believe how many years ago we presented this, but the theory on going from, and getting the teachers to agree to go from five to six was that their caseload would be the same, but their class size would be smaller. So, for instance, Mike was an English teacher, you might have been in department there then, but if Mike was an English teacher then, he still is an English teacher, but if he was full-time, you know, he would have, say, 25 kids spread out over five periods. That'd be, you know, 125 kids in his caseload, and when we went to six, now he's got, you know, 21 kids in each class, and it brings it down, the ratio down. And again, and it also allowed us to do some electives. So, to answer your question very long-windedly, it would obviously increase the class sizes, but again, decrease a lot of elective offerings. We'd be very focused on just the core requirements, which is very bland and to me, very boring. And we're trying to give these students a very comprehensive experience in the high school, being a comprehensive high school, and I think that would really limit a lot of options that we would have. And I think of Andrea, the special ed kids that are required to have core academics. Now, like if we were in five periods, can you just kind of speak to what that would look like?
Yeah, often, the kids in inclusion who have special needs would be, are in right now currently math, English, science, history, a core academics class, but that, because that's a required service on their IEP. And then they're also sometimes in a core math and core English class. So, these are students who are often reluctant to come to school because they don't feel a lot of success there, and there really isn't room for any high interest electives for them. They take their PE or health class, and then that's their whole schedule. So, those students often don't get to take many electives. And the ones that are going to careers after, jobs after, and their plan is not college after, part of their transition plan a lot of times is finding interest in different electives to find which career they want to go into after to help them get there. Because that's really our job around an IEP, is that they say where they want to go, and we try to offer them coursework to get there. So, that would inhibit them from doing that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
April?
I just had one more question. So, it popped in my head when she was talking, but, so with the introduction of these, the potential for these classes, I know it's like as they get filled, what do you anticipate? I know we obviously, we have cuts coming because of the way that the budget was-
I heard that.
-going through, so like, and obviously, we never know what they're going to be.
Sure.
We don't know, but what do you anticipate the impact of either being able to not offer because of where those cuts may lie, some of these classes that you guys are going to put all this time and work and effort into building a curriculum that you might no longer be able to offer if we don't have the staff to do it?
Well, the curriculum part, remember, we're going to be focusing on that in June. So, by June, my boss tells me the dust will settle, and we know where we're going to be. So, that, the curriculum piece won't be an issue. And this happens pretty organically through the students requesting those courses, and we'll be able to make decisions kind of based on what our needs are. And, you know, if there's an opportunity where we can cut because the students haven't picked, you know, we were offering in a department maybe 30 sections, and we only need 25 or 24. So, okay, that, that's an area we can probably reduce. So, the nice thing is it's not like us getting together and going, all right, how, how are we going to satisfy this budget crisis? It's going to happen through the students picking the courses that they need, and then us looking at it and saying, okay, this is what we have for our staff, this is how many sections we can offer, this is what it looks like the students want, and now, you know, and there may be like, what you may hear is there may be a department that we just don't have the room to make a cut, and there may be another one where we have room to make a cut there. We, we try to make cuts that don't impact the students. So, in other words, when they come back in late August, they're not going to be able to tell that we cut, you know, X number of teachers. That's the goal, is that it doesn't impact them. The hard part is it's tough to be creative, because we've been creative every single year, and, and when you're to a point where you're close to the bone, it's tough, you know, to make those cuts. But we're going to do the best we can to offer the best programs we can for our students. They deserve that, and we will continue to try and be creative and, and make sure that we can offer as many of these classes that the students want as we can. I mean, ultimately, there'll be classes, and, you know, we have, you know, 25 kids want this class, and we just can't run it. And I don't think that's going to be unique to Wareham High School. You know, in talking to my colleagues, that's, that's something that happens all the time. There's multiple classes that you would love to run, and you just can't because you don't have the staff. So, you adjust, and you look at, okay, well, what, what do the students want as a second or a third or a fourth choice? And then we try and satisfy the needs that way. We tell the students, you, you're going to pick all, we call them alt-electives, and, and you have to pick at least four alt-electives. So, that way, when that situation you described comes up, okay, maybe they didn't get the class they really wanted, but now we haven't put them in order, maybe we're able to get that second one or the third one. And, and sometimes, we can't get them anything, and we'll have the guidance council meet with them and say, hey, you know, this isn't going to work, what would you like in place of this?
Okay, thank you.
Welcome.
Jeff?
So, Joyce's thoughtful question created another one for me.
Sorry.
Geez, sorry. I, I personally don't know enough about, nor do I think the school committee should be in the business of saying, you know, what's, what's a better schedule, a seven period or an eight period, et cetera? You know, I just, that, that to me is a level of what I'll call micromanagement, which is, which is inappropriate. But I, we are forced to be in the business of what I'll call teacher productivity, which is to say, how many students are our teachers taking care of, educating? And we're forced into it because we're constantly not given enough to maintain level service, right? And so, every time, we start by cutting overhead, okay? Sorry, guys, some of you are overhead, okay? It's a terrible term. And at a certain point, you've cut all the overhead you should, okay? And you're left with cutting educators, people who are in front of students. And that's always what we do, we want done the last.
Right.
And that gets into the issue of teacher productivity. Just how many students are they taking care of?
Right.
Now, we know at the elementary school level, there's some data that says you go too high, you know, and it starts to impact on their ability to learn.
Right.
The, the data isn't at all clear that that's true at the high school level, and that apparently the difference between 20 and 25, for example, and perhaps even 25 and 30, it's just not clear, for whatever reason. Which means we feel less guilty, you know, when we, when those cuts take place. So, I do think when you're putting together a schedule, which I know nothing about, okay? When you're putting a schedule together, you do have to think in terms of what is the most productive use of these very valuable people who are teaching my students? So, that's all I have to say, but you really do need to think in those terms because the alternative is cutting the wrong things.
We, we have quite a robust process in that, and our student information system, Power School, does a great job of giving us what we call tally reports. And we, as a group, get those tally reports, put it together, and we look at, you know, these are obviously tallies of students' requests. I can assure you, that has been done way before I was even a principal, and it continues to be as I'm, during my principalship. We have some great conversations, we look at, you know, how many classes we're going to need to offer, trying to keep them, you know, within range of, you know, productivity, as you called it. And it's, we put in over 1,000 hours on that schedule, and that's combined, obviously. And, and I even have a friend of mine who takes a look at it and works with me to make sure there's nothing that we're missing, because we want to try and run and offer as many classes as we can for our students, not just to be optimal, but also to give them an awesome experience in Wareham High School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have two quick questions. One is, I know last year we talked about the public safety pathway, and I know it's being eliminated this time around. Was that for just lack of kids showing interest in that particular pathway, or is there another reason?
I mean, we had, I mean, there was parts of it that were IB, the person, like, there was aspects of it that we could no longer do just because of IB going away. That personal cla, that personal skills class was actually an IB class. And then, the real, the really only viable one that we could do was the EMT, and it made more sense just to keep, to put it into the environmental and life sciences, and then encourage kids to also enroll in anatomy and physiology along with that. So, that they're, they're really getting, you know, a strong foundation for all of that.
And then, I know Mr. Swett put in a plug for economics. I'm going to put a plug, this is not necessarily a course, but maybe I asked Mr. Murray about this one a little bit because it usually falls on English department. I, I want to put a plug in for media literacy, distinguishing fact from opinion, looking at propaganda, looking at news sources, and especially with AI and everything now. Is that skills that are embedded within the English curriculum? Or you could say in a certain year, this is all students?
I feel like it's all, all I talk about.
But is that like in grade nine, English, that's all you talk about, or grade 10?
No, I'm talking to me personally. Yeah, no, certainly, so for example, the, you know, the research paper every year, it actually starts off with that tone, so it's, we have, actually sophomore year, sorry, it's the, it's the controversial topic research paper. And freshman year is a little bit more of a literary analysis, but it's kind of interest-based, based on what the kids are reading. And again, we do turn to literary analysis stuff. We also have contemporary affairs as an elective, and pretty much any, I guess, any course that has the instructor's name is Murray, you're going to get a dose of that.
Well, that's great, but I just hope that with the courses that the instructor's not named Murray, that those same skills are also being taught, because it's crucial today.
That's the, I mean, that's, that's the thing, and that's why we have, that's the whole point. That's why we have the, the critical thinking at the end of the history, social studies classes, you know,
communication.
And certainly, those courses and those subject areas are not limited to those things. You know, we, we like to think that we cover all of them, but we actually designate those, those titles for, for subject areas based on kind of like their main focus, you know, so we're, you know, speaking to the vision of the graduate, but absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's media literacy framework and standards, and I don't know where they are brought to the students, if that's through the librarian or media specialist, or if that's, again, imbued throughout the rest of the curriculums. So, I just put my plug in for that.
I think it's embedded, and I would also echo Mr. Swett's comments about adults in economics, and say the same about this skill as well.
Okay.
Now that Facebook doesn't care.
Yeah, exactly. Once again, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, appreciate it.
Thank you for having us.
We have to vote.
And yes, yes, we do have to take a vote on this, so do I have a motion to accept the program of studies?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstaining, 5-0-0. Thank you. All right, Kristin, you are up whenever you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. I just have a quick update for this evening, not too much different than previous updates in regard to the budget, looking at our major categories. We are still running a small surplus in salaries, and if we have some positions that are open and they continue to remain open, the surplus obviously will be more, but, so we do have that salary surplus. However, just about the same amount hovering, just under 100,000 salary surplus versus our transportation deficit, out-of-district transportation. So, I know I will be coming to you soon for some transfers for out-of-district transportation. We have just been notified that there's three new homeless students, McEnivento students, so we're working out the transportation with the other towns right now with that. And we do have one more special ed student requiring transportation, and as I mentioned, we've had changes with some of our existing students. I haven't come with any transfers yet because this line is just so volatile. As you can tell, every, every month, there's changes. So, until we actually, you know, receive the invoices and know that those students are effectively going to be transported, I'm going to hold off on that so we're not transported, so we're not doing transfers and then doing another one. So, until the picture is set better, but those are just some things coming down the pike with that. Out-of-district tuition, right now, we're, we're pretty much breaking even. We have a little bit of a surplus, but I was just speaking with the out-of-district coordinator today, and there's a possibility that we may have a new student being outplaced. So, those changes are, you know, they're always happening. The, the most important thing is just to be aware of them, and we spend a lot of time, myself and the student services, the special ed director, Dr. DeAndrea, talking about, you know, keeping each other updated on these things. So, fortunately, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's unexpected, but it's never, we always know, we always have a plan to, to figure it out. Some other expenses that we have that, you know, we, we struggle with a lot are still our home tutoring. So, we may see some transfers for that. Right now, we're, we're doing okay. And also, our, some of the related services, contract services for ABA therapy, speech therapy, psychologists. So, we're managing those, those are contract services right now for the most part, and we're managing those using some grant funds, but we anticipate that we're going to have to maybe come up with some, some other funds. So, you might see some transfers, you know, in, in the future for that. So, that's all I really have for the, you know, the budget update, nothing. Everything's pretty, pretty stable, other than, you know, those, those few line items that we might have to do some, some patch jobs with.
Any questions, Kristin? Jeff?
So, no snow days, correct?
Of course not.
You're taking the superintendent's word for that, right?
I do, I always do.
Are you at all concerned, I realize there's 107,000 encumbered, you're at all concerned about the fact that transportation and contract services is 96%?
Yes, yeah, and that's, you know, that's, that's, that- Yes, yeah, and that's, you know, that's, that's, that deficit that we're looking at for transportation, it's, it's going to be in contract services for the out-of-district vendors. So we do have some, some students that aren't encumbered yet, and because those students that we haven't, the, we, we're aware of them, but it hasn't been finalized yet, but, so they're not encumbered in the budget, but they're, they're encumbered in, on some of my spreadsheets and.
So we should expect a transfer at some point?
Exactly.
To cope with that?
Yes, yes.
And you've got another account that you feel comfortable will have some money to transfer from?
Yes, right now, it would be from driver salaries, for the most part. That's where I would look to first. So that, that's, I think that's, that would equal out.
Yeah, you're right. That's, that's somewhat lower than I expected as well.
Yes.
Okay, so, stable.
Yes, that's a good word, is, is stable. It's, it's.
I like stable. Okay.
Any other questions for Kristen? Seeing none. Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Dr. DeAndrea, you're up, report of the superintendent.
Thank you. In the superintendent's report, you have a list of bill and payroll warrants that I ask that you approve.
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
Okay, and as we do on a yearly basis, we'll be submitting a town warrant article for the Springtown meeting, for our McKinny Vento fund transfer from the town to the school district into our transportation revolving account. We claimed 100,465 of FY '23 expenses. We received 79% of that, or 79,080. That's for 15 students, eight of them from Wareham to other districts, and seven from other districts to Wareham. So I ask that you approve this warrant article, and we'll submit it for the Springtown meeting.
So moved. Second.
Okay, before we vote, Jeff, you have a clarification?
Just to be clear, we lost a little over 20%. For what reason? That they just literally didn't have, there wasn't an authorization through the legislature to cover any more than that? Is, is that the reason, or is there some other reason that we lost 20%?
That, that's my understanding, much like Circuit Breaker, it's kind of what they have the appetite for, or that what they can reimburse, the level they can reimburse? I just, am I correct on that?
I think so. We just, we don't know. When, looking over the history of the percent reimbursed, it's been all over the place, from 100% to as low as in the 30s, mid 30s. One thing I can say is, from the, the amount that we claimed last year versus this claim was $50,000 less. So in its, so.
I'm sorry, we claimed?
Dollar value.
We, we claimed a little over 100,000 this year, and we, and we claimed how much next year, last year?
Last year, 150,000.
That's a huge difference.
It is, and it's just, it's just so volatile and intransient by nature, that some years, you know, going back in the, the history of the claims, it, it just really depends on how many students you're transporting, you're sharing the transport with.
I understand.
How long that they are transported. Some students will have for the entire school year, some students will have for a few months, and the students, you know.
Do you remember what percentage we got last year?
Last year was 82.4%, and this year, it's seven, you know, just under seven, around 79%.
Do you, now to you, Matt, do you think we need to make, make it clear anywhere that we're actually sharing the cost of this, or is that unnecessary? Because this is a 50-50 split by law between us and the, and the other location from which the student is, is either going or coming, I can't remember. But bottom line is, it's not 100% that we're absorbing, we're absorbing only 50%. Does that need to be made clear, or is that irrelevant?
This is our, the, our actual expenditure.
Oh, I know it is.
Yeah, so this is our, so actually, the other district, they would be claiming that same amount, the other one, that same amount, or.
We don't need to say that in the motion?
No, no, we do not need to say that.
Okay, okay. So we have a motion on the floor to put this down to the town warrant. You have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, 5-0-0.
I do want to say that at the MASC conference, and one thing that drives me bananas about the whole McKinny Vento thing, is that we do get this reimbursement, whichever percentage it is. And then, even though it was money that came out of our budget, that it has to go to the town, and then we have to go to make a warrant to go to town meeting, to then ask for our money back, to go back in our transportation revolving fund that it came out of in the first place. So I want to hopefully try to get, now that I'm on the MASC leadership team, a resolution put before the legislature to try to avoid this step, if at all possible. So hopefully, if I can get this together, I'll work with, like, Glenn Kuchar, and try to get this, and other school committees to maybe back us as for a resolution for next year, to avoid this. Because if, every district has to go through this, and it seems like an unnecessary step, because hypothetically, what if we brought this to town meeting, and they're like, no?
Right.
Like, it could get voted down, but it's money that we already spent, that we're already incorporating into our budget, and it just seems like a really unnecessary cycle. So I want to look into.
Extra step, I think that makes sense.
But I don't know if, for, right, and for.
The problem, April, is it makes too much sense.
Who knew?
It's been a resolution before, or am I thinking of something else?
I don't know that.
You're welcome to, but you're probably spinning your wheels, but you're welcome to try.
Well, just in case we end up, I end up trying to put this forward, I would hope that I could bring this to you guys as support to help me sponsor the resolution at the MASC conference in November, if I can make this happen, so.
But I also would, would just say, that's a good idea. But I also would say, I wouldn't want to imply that we've ever had trouble getting it from the town.
No. And we haven't.
It actually hasn't been around that long.
We haven't, but you never know. Like, people who don't know what this is could go to town meeting and be like, well, I'm not giving this, we just voted XYZ for the budget, why are we voting to give them this when people don't understand? I just would never want to take the chance that it's an, it is a possibility, not that we've ever had to go through it.
Right, anything's possible, yeah.
But I mean, if it has to get voted at town meeting, things get voted no at town meeting. So I would just hate to see that ever happen. So if there's a way that we can help districts not have to go through this nonsense, I would like to try.
The irony is, they could throw it on the cherry sheet, and it still wouldn't matter. It would be, still remain the same issue, the town, it goes to the town first.
One thing that I will add, too, is for next year, our claim, based, the claim is based on your previous year's actual expenditures. So last year, the close of fiscal '24, we spent, I'm getting ready to claim, 203,000.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's almost double. That's the good, the good news. The bad news is, is some of that has already been sent to us, because if you recall, last year, the, the students that were in shelters, that were transported to their district of origin, so we did have some students that were in shelters, that we were transporting to their district of origin, that part of the claim, the state expedited the funds to and sent us some of that.
Really?
And it was without further appropriation, because it was just odd, but, you know, I wasn't, we'll take it. They just sent it directly to us and said, schools deposit it in your, you know, in your account, your appropriate account, so it didn't have. So some of that, 200,000 that I, that we're claiming now, we've already received, but the actual total is, is higher.
So, April, they've already set a precedent, they can do it.
Boom.
I thought that money that you were receiving last year was in addition to.
No, they said it's going to offset.
Oh, those sneaky, sneaky, sneaky buggers.
Right, so we received two types. So one was for the education of the students, and then the other part was for the transportation of, of the students to, to their district of origin. So we had some students that were, say, placed in a shelter here in Wareham, that we were transporting to, you know, I don't know, Attleboro, or somewhere in New Bedford, somewhere in Rainham. So it just really depended, but, you know, it is, it is a lot more, so, and I think that's, that's not uncommon for a lot of districts.
Thank you. Any reports from any of the budget subcommittee, public relations communications subcommittee, collaborative, or are we good for now?
We have a policy review meeting next week, but other than that, there's no report yet.
Okay.
Jeff? I got confirmation from Rockland Trust, they have invested the Park Scholarship money. Unfortunately, it's lost money, but that's the way it goes when you're actually investing as compared to using CDs.
How much money?
I'm not saying.
Okay.
I know the answer to that question, but I'm not saying. It's, it's fully invested.
What goes up, what goes down comes back.
Exactly. And I will be meeting sometime in the near future with a bunch of high school students to teach them about.
Economics?
Yes, well, finance, anyway.
Finance.
Yeah, unfortunately, they're going to overreact to the fact that we've lost money, but we'll try to deal with that.
I'd just like to remind everyone, we have an executive session next Tuesday, the 21st, at 6:00 PM. That'll be over at the superintendent's conference room. And then our next school committee meeting is January 30th. There will also be an executive session meeting that night, starting at 5:30. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, 5-0-0. The meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.